Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're gonna go ahead and get started to be mindful of the time. If you can, please stand to say the pledge of allegiance with us and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, welcome to tonight's board meeting. We are going to bring back our students' spotlight this evening, and we are going to highlight our Tar- oh gosh, I'm so sorry. May we have a roll call, please?
Amy Lor.
Present.
Rick Berger.
Present.
Carrie LaBella.
Present.
Stacy Killian.
Present.
Ken Warner.
Present.
James Skelton.
Present.
Christina Chris.
Present.
Obviously, we are excited to honor the students who are here today.
It's summertime. No one's really in session, so to have students here is great. And we have our Tarahaw South doubles tennis partners Savannah Simler and Jessica Calabavi to come this evening and speak. I just have a couple of like little tidbits that I believe one of the parents shared with us. It says Savannah and Jessica entered their season 20 to 4, made IHSAA doubles tourney state finals, one of just eight doubles teams statewide to make state. They both earned second team All-State, one of just 20 doubles teams to earn All-State out of more than 300 around the state. They were first South girls doubles team to make the doubles tourney state finals since 2016. They were part of the Tarahaw South team that won a third sectional and regional title in the last four years, and the team this year also won Conference Indiana for the first time since 2018. So, welcome this evening.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Board meeting soon after they won, and then went to state, and then when their season was over, we asked them to come, and they graduated. They had college stuff that they were doing. So, I said, "Well, we'll take you whenever we can get you." So, and you can tell Savannah's dad is Rick Simler, so he graciously wrote all of that.
He did. He did. So, it's wonderful. Love having you both here this evening, especially since you're high school graduates, heading off to college soon. But please share with us your experience, anything you want us to know, introduce yourselves. We're just excited you're here to share.
So, I'm s- can you guys hear me?
You can move it. Don't be afraid of it.
I'm Savannah. So, yeah, I just graduated from South. I've been playing tennis probably since, well competitively, since sixth grade at Honey Creek. And during sixth grade, like, I didn't make varsity, so then that was like my motivation to just get better. And so, seventh grade, then it was our COVID year, so we didn't really get a season. And then my eighth grade year, we finally got season, and I cracked varsity. And so, then I got to South, and that was like, South had one of their, like, more, like, rough years that they've had in, like, school history. So, like, it was just my motivation to get them back to, like, their tradition of, like, winning. And so, I made one doubles, and I was, like, nervous about playing doubles first, but then my coach said, like, "If you're able to win, like, during postseason, you can continue for the state tournament and stuff." So, I was like, "Okay, like, I'll stick with that." So, the partner that I had previously, we, uh, the team ended up making it to semi-state. So, then that season ended, and then the next season, the team didn't win, and I got into the individual tournament, and we made it to the regional championship of that match. And then we lost to Indy North Central. But then the next year, we played, team made it back to semi-state. We were upset in sectionals, so we didn't get to move on in the individual tournament. But if we did, we would've been in the state, individual state finals again. But just like being upset, we were really upset about that. But it was great motivation for this past season, and then we had an amazing season, and just like, made it to state.
Wonderful.
Well, my, her freshman sophomore year, she played one doubles, and I played a different position on the team. We actually did not even know each other. We were not friends at all. We were, we did not say a word to each other. And then her partner graduated, and I was like, during the summer, I was like, "I'm gonna take her spot, and I'm gonna make this happen." And so, I, I like contacted her tennis coach, just like, "Yeah, I wanna start hitting, so I think, so I can be Savannah's partner." I was, I planned this whole thing out. I knew this was gonna happen. And like, look at us now. We do everything together. We were matching out. You got matching shoes on.
Yeah, I know it's the shoes.
Just for this, just for that. So, I think more than just like playing tennis, like, I have one of my best friends through tennis, and we had a great season. And like, people on our team always ask us, like, "Oh, how do you, like, your girls play so well?" Like, to our parents or coaches. And it's like, more than like our tennis skills, like, the chemistry between the both of us is like the most important part. Like, without, like, there's double teams across the state, but like, without, like, the connection that we have, we would not be able to be as, like, good as we are. And so, I'm thankful for that.
That's wonderful.
So, your next step, college? Or, let's hear where your next, where you're going to college to?
Okay, I'm going to Sanford University. It's in fifteen minutes south of Birmingham, Alabama. So, I'm gonna go there, and I'm gonna study sports analytics.
I'm going to Indiana University to get my Bachelor of Science in Chemistry. So, and then I don't know what I'll do with that. Just have it.
So, are you gonna play tennis there? Well, if you decide you wanna be a chemistry teacher, I'm pretty sure we'll find out.
I'm sure there's space here.
Are you gonna play tennis at the collegiate level? Nope?
It's, it's way harder than you think to go college and tennis. It's a lot different than, like, football or basketball. It's, 'cause they have all these, like, international kids who come from Europe, and those kids, man, they're bred to play tennis from the day they're born.
Yeah, I think we're both still gonna do, like, club, though, just to stay active, and like, they're still really competitive just through that. So, we'll still, like, have tennis in our life, but it won't, just won't be the same as high school.
I hope you get to get together and play together again throughout your college years, or however that may look.
Yes, yeah.
Well, one great memory that you had from your time at South playing doubles together? I know you have a lot, but let's, let's do-
But you can also say in public. That'll be on record forever.
Okay, one of mine would probably be this year, we, after, we, so we stayed, like, in hotels, like, big matches and stuff. We stayed in hotels. So, this is leading up to our first match at Center Grove. And we had just beat Center Grove that night. Well, we did. Our team ended up losing 2-3. But, yeah. And so, then we went to a Mexican restaurant, and just like, it was so funny, 'cause our friends were, like, dancing, and just like, like, we have, like, a ton of fun, fun memories, like, on the court, but just like the memories with the girls, like, off the courts, like, just staying in the hotels was always fun, or like, just laughing and stuff with all the girls.
That's great.
I, I just really love tennis in general. But I think my favorite memory is like, oh, man, this is really silly. This is silly. 'Cause if you can't tell, I have a lot of energy when I'm talking about tennis. And I have it on court, because like, part of my job is like, make sure that when we're losing, we don't lose, like, our energy. So, like, like, we're like, I don't know if you know how tennis scoring works, but we'll be down, like, or we'll be up 2-1, and when you switch sides, the coaches talk to the opponents. And I'll turn to Savannah, I'm like, "Oh, their coach is telling our opponents that they're gonna break us. They think they're gonna break us, but they don't know who we are." And then we go, and we win. And so, it's like, whatever.
That's great. I, I love hearing that it was your goal. You knew what, you were gonna go after that team spot with her, and I love that it came to fruition, and you guys were a powerhouse and heading to state. So, congratulations. And is there anything else you'd like to share? Oh, well, that's okay.
We wish both, we wish both of you lucked in college.
Yeah, for sure.
So, you guys are gonna come up here with us, and we're gonna embarrass you, and for a photo.
Right here is fine, but you have to hold it so that the thing's not in your face.
Oh, come up.
Oh, there we are.
I told Savannah I wasn't gonna say that all of her successes because of her childhood babysitter.
You gotta give her credit.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck.
You guys are gonna have to do this too in a minute. Our next spotlight, let me pull up just a little bit of information I have. And we are going to hear from the teachers and students from this summer's Performing Arts Workshop, also known as PAWS. We're going to hear a little bit about what you did this summer, and hear from the teachers involved, and maybe some of your favorite memories. So, I have the two adult teachers, Brian Ingram and Brittany Perez. But then all the students come up, and please introduce yourselves. And I think, is there a PowerPoint as well? Okay, just some photos. But come on up, guys. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello, welcome.
Hello.
Thank you for having us. So, we've been doing PAWS program together for a few years, and it's a program that's ran for a lot of years. And so, we just wanna thank the school board and the Education Foundation for supporting that, because it honestly makes a huge difference in our lives and the students' lives. And so, you feel like filling them in on some of the information?
Sure. So, I've been the music director for this program now for the last 12 years. And the, the, the interest that these kids have in this program is always great. I mean, I have kids that'll be contacting me January, February of that year, saying, "Hey, what's this program gonna be about? You know, are we good to do it again next year? Or are you the one doing the music part?" And their, their excitement for even, you know, we're talking six months out, to be able to want to do this is, it's always energizing to kinda get back in there and do this each year. This year's program was called Rock Around the Block. It was a 1950s-based musical. Had a lot of, like, 1950s rock-type sound. It ensues with, there's a problem with the gymnasium at the school, so they can't hold the school dance there, so they're going to hold it at the diner. And there's some other problems that, that creep up. The lead character, she is the third cousin of the famous rock star Ziggy Springer, and she promises that he will be there to perform at the show, but she makes the promise without ever talking to her cousin, who she's never met before. And all the hilarity ensues that comes with that, and it was, it was a fun show.
All right. So, I say probably annually, we've got anywhere from 35 to 45 kids that participate in the show. And so, we break them up into three groups. And so, we have the performers, we have the crew kids who build the set pieces and design. They also run the lights, the sound, and help backstage. And then we have the orchestra kids, and they play all sorts of instruments, like, just ranging from drums to piano to just all of, all of the instruments you can imagine. And so, I just want to really just express how much fun it is for these kids, and the opportunities they learn to public speak, and the confidence they build is just something we don't necessarily get a lot of time to do in the classroom. And so, I just wanna tell you guys that we really do appreciate this opportunity. And moving forward, my own personal agenda, with all of these school changes, just please make sure you keep the arts, the musics, and the performing arts really at, you know, just, just at the front of your memory, just because it really does give these guys an opportunity to show up to school and to have something that they're really involved in, and engaged in, and build lifetime friendships that just last. And that's it.
One of the really unique experiences with this is, you know, this is not just kids from one school. You know, we're, we're made up of all the middle schools and high schools. These kids come together. Some, most of the time, they don't even know who each other are, and by the end, you know, they have this great friendship. I mean, all my orchestra pick kids this year had a group chat going. They all went to a Mexican restaurant as soon as the show was done. And, you know, these are, a lot of these kids didn't even know each other prior to it. So, it's always interesting to see the friendships that they make, that, you know, so many people they have never would've even known prior to doing this.
It does help with transitioning to that, what I've noticed as a middle school teacher. It helps them feel more confident in the high schools when they go in, because we do, we, we shift from each high school annually. And so, it gives the kids an opportunity just to feel more at ease in the space and to build friendships, so that way, when they're walking in the door, that first day of high school, they see some familiar faces, you know, that they've worked with, and they know, and they've had fun with. So, I think that's a good opportunity.
Do any of the students that came this evening, you guys wanna share anything about your experience, or come on up?
When we made them aware, they actually prepared speeches for you.
Thank you, guys. No, come on up, introduce yourselves, and, and share what, what you brought this evening. And feel free to move the microphone, however you're comfortable.
Hi, my name is Isabel Saproti, and I'm a 13-year-old seventh grader at Woodrow Wilson. This summer experience was my first experience with the, at the, with the PAWS program, and I wanted to share a little bit about my experience. I'm normally very introverted at school, but I, I love to be on stage, singing and performing. I've been in seven musical theater shows and plays in the community. With the encouragement, with the encouragement of my art inquiry teacher, Ms. Perez and Mr. McArdle, I spent my first summer with the PAWS program this year. My, the experience helped me with, with make new friends, collaborate with others, and with similar, similar interests as me. And I had the opportunity to learn the biggest part I've ever had in my role of Misty, the rebel, the rebel beatnik in the nifty 50s. My confidence grew stronger as I was able to learn lines and challenging songs. Programs like PAWS are important for kids like me to feel like they belong, to, and to better express themselves in a safe, welcoming environment. I hope to be part, I continue to be part of many PAWS summers in the future. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your support, and thank you to the cast, crew, and instrumental pit, and teachers for believing in me and letting me be part of something special.
Hi, my name is Shailly. I'm in eighth grade at Woodrow Wilson, and I love theater. Woodrow Wilson doesn't have a theater program, so PAWS is my only opportunity to participate in theater. I joined PAWS at the beginning of my seventh grade year and hope to continue theater with PAWS throughout the rest of my school years. I've met some really amazing friends who attend other schools that without PAWS, I wouldn't have met. PAWS gives us a lot of opportunities to learn more about theater. It helps us grow confidence to perform and meet new friends who share the same interests. PAWS truly means a lot to me, as well as everyone else who participates, and our families who enjoy watching our shows. I also played Jane in the show, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chloe Hall, and I played the main character Gracie Stanley in Vigo County's Performing Arts Workshop, most recent production, Rock Around the Block. PAWS was my very first exposure to anything theater and performance-related, and has shaped such an integral part of my life, allowing me to meet some of my closest friends and develop passion and talent I know will stick with, with me for the rest of my life. I remember the first day we started rehearsing onstage at Woodrow Wilson Middle School and being amazed at how bright the stage lights were, a feeling that became an adrenaline rush in my first performance. This year was my fourth, and hopefully not final, PAWS, and within that time, I had grown and improved myself to a point where my directors trusted me to hold the role that could make or break the show. It truly is an honor to be able to speak in front of an audience, just, not just in an auditorium with a silly costume, trying to convince hundreds that I'm a cleaning lady, or a sheriff, or a cat, or a teenager in the 50s, but in front of a board, telling them of the program I rearranged my summers to attend. My time at PAWS taught me so much about myself, and the month that we have together, only something this unique can. It's stressful and hard, and makes me wanna rip out my hair when people won't learn their lines, but even more, I wouldn't trade it for anything. And honestly, my summers wouldn't be the same if I didn't come home complaining to my parents, but still choosing to chase those lights and the chance to be someone I'm not. But for a moment, when the curtain opens, I could be Marjorie, or Sheriff Withers, or the cat, or Gracie Stanley, and have the chance to make the world I keep coming back to my own, on a stage that isn't just quite golden, but as valuable as the, ah, but just as valuable because of those who make it all worth it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Milo Bennett, and I'm 16. I go to West Vigo. And this year has been my fourth show with a performing arts workshop, and I play drum set for the pit. It is, it's an amazing experience, being in the pit with all these people. I remember the first show I had was going into seventh grade. It was, um, it was the show looking through the, looking, I mean, through the looking class that messed up. And I'd been playing guitar for maybe two years, and when I looked at the music the first time, I just wanted to walk out of the building. It was, uh, something I, I just had no, never seen before. But then Mr. Ingram and the, our bassist at the time calmed me down and showed me through the music. And during that time, I made a bunch of friends, and I felt more confident in my playing. And thank you for all of that.
So, this is the show that we put together in 18 days each year. So, we only have 18 days to do all this, to go from these kids getting their lines from the very beginning, not even knowing what part they're gonna play, getting the music for the very first time. They learned all this in about 18 days, and then they put the show on, so.
That's amazing.
It's a winter, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, and we've got three adults that kind of oversee each area. I think what's really unique about this program is like, we've got, you know, we've got younger students, and we've got older students, and there's a lot of mentoring that happens. And so, just to see, and I'm gonna call Chloe out. Chloe was a, she's always been very confident, but she, she was timid as a sixth grader at Woodrow Wilson, but just to see her blossom into a high school student that we still have contact with, and watching her then mentor some of the younger kids, and she was a great opportunity because of that. And so, she actually did all of our choreography for our whole show. So, we're putting them into roles where they learn more leadership. But she's great at it now.
I, I think, I, I mean, hearing both you, all of you speak, and the girls from tennis earlier, I, it just makes me reminisce things of school, and thinking back to things we got, that I got to do and experience. And so, to come tonight and share, I think it's a great reminder of why we are doing what we do, and, and for the work that you guys put in. So, thank you so much for giving these students friendships and, and lifelong memories and exposure to things they may pursue as adults. So, I, I loved it. Thank you for coming this evening.
Hi.
Yes, please.
So, hi, I'm Amy. I've done seven years of PAWS. I love it. My mother was part of the music instruction back in, you know, the 90s. And so, I'm just sitting here thinking about Nancy Lidengood and Rex Magna, and how happy they'd be to see you guys, so.
So, how long have both of you been involved with this?
I've, I've done it for 12 years now.
And I'm sitting at six, but at Wilson alone, we do have a theater program.
And now, you're gonna recruit her, make sure she's in it next year.
But yeah, I've done 13 years there, so.
Well, thank you to both of you for the leadership and the time you've given. Thank you.
I have one more question. So, um-
And we're former PAWS students as well.
Were we in the shows together?
Could've been.
We could be. So, my question is about advertising. How do you let people know? Because I was sitting here looking at this and going, "I didn't go. I didn't even know when it was."
So, this year, we've been at a tiny bit of a deficit, just because we lost Holly Pease as our director. And so, we just kinda, just put stuff out on Facebook that we could. And so, without, without a director, I, we definitely felt, you know-
We didn't realize how much she actually did.
No, I realized what she did, but she took a lot of stress off of our shoulders when it came to that kind of thing, just because we're just so focused on the kids. Trying to advertise is very difficult to do.
Well, next year, hit me up, okay?
We have a Facebook page.
Yeah, we do have a Vigo County Facebook page for PAWS specifically.
Also, let you know, we have a chief communication officer's in the back, that if you let her do that, she can take that stress and pressure off of your shoulders.
Yes. That's a good point.
I just wanna say, you guys have it luck, uh, easier than we did. We used to have to perform outside and do a whole week of outdoor rehearsals, and three shows outside at Larison Pavilion at Dumbing Park, and then at the amphitheater at Fairbanks. So, enjoy that air conditioning. Are we doing another photo? Okay.
Before you do so, I do, I want to acknowledge and thank the Vigo County Education Foundation and all the people in the community who donated specifically to make sure this program could continue. The state of Indiana significantly cuts summer programming. That includes summer school across the board and programs like this. And because of donors in the community and the Vigo County Education Foundation, we were able to continue this program. I also wanna thank the kids. Part of what we're doing with our facility plan is to not, to decrease opportunities like this, but to make it more likely that we keep, if not expand and increase these opportunities. That's our goal behind what we're doing, and listening to these kids speak only strengthens that we're doing the right thing by, by pursuing that. So, thank you for your time this evening.
If you can join us up here for a quick photo. Yeah, I know. So, this is the time of the meeting to where we thank you guys for coming this evening and sharing. You are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the, of the meeting. But if you have other commitments or things you need to do, please feel free to take this time to, to exit, and, and we hope to hear from you again soon and hear from next year. But we're gonna move on with the rest of our agenda.
And thank you again for sharing your experiences.
We'll give them all a round of applause as they leave. At this time, we're moving on to our first call of citizen comments. These are comments related to agenda items only. I do not have anyone having signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda this evening.
I'm of approval of the consent agenda as presented. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstain. Thank you. Next, we're moving to our new business, the personnel report and professional leave request. Mrs. Donna Wilson, filling in for Mr. Michael Cox.
Yes, a little bit different role for me this evening. On behalf of Mr. Cox, tonight I present the personnel report and the professional leave request for your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report and professional leave request as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Well, that was easy, Donna, huh? You don't have to go through all your numbers, right?
No, no numbers this evening.
I mean, we always ask how we're doing, so did he give you, like, a general statement?
Mr. Cox, Mr. Cox did indicate that he is still working on special education openings.
Okay.
Primarily.
Thank you.
I also wanna congratulate Sharon Manley for being the new principal at Hoosier Prairie, which was part of what you just approved. And then also, congratulations to Sharon Wilhoy, who you also just approved to be the new principal at Booker T. Washington.
Well, we do have a-
Lindsay, what's the word? Sorry.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstain. Opposed and abstain. It's exciting this evening. Um congratulations to everyone coming on board with us and new positions and. And um helping to keep our corporation running. Next, we have the Otis Elevator Company Service Contract, Mr. Clayton Creason. Welcome.
Good evening. Following the expiration of our current elevator service agreement and due to some dissatisfaction with our existing service provider. We recently conducted a request for proposal or RFP for elevator service and maintenance. Our goal was to identify a provider that could better meet the needs in terms of quality, reliability, cost and overall service. After issuing the RFP, Otis Elevator was the only respondent. A strong indication of their commitment to partnering with VCSC and their confidence in delivering the necessary services. Additionally, past experience with Otis has been positive, further strengthening our trust in their ability to support us moving forward. Upon evaluating Otis Elevator, we found there they offer a comprehensive range of services tailored to our specific needs. Their service area includes all of our facilities in Terre Haute where two dedicated licensed maintenance tech. Maintenance technicians are available to provide specialized knowledge and expertise for our equipment. This proximity ensures faster response times, more efficient service when needed and significant cost savings. Given the positive past experience and the quality of their service and the strategic location of their technicians. We believe Otis is the best choice for our elevator service and maintenance provider. Based on the results of the RFP and past experience, I'd like to recommend to let the VCSC move forward with Otis Elevator. As our provider for service and maintenance of all elevators and lifts. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Otis Elevator Company Service Contract as presented. I second.
Yeah, the motion is second. Are there are there any questions or comments for the board?
How many elevators are we operating or?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Elevators and like stage lifts, they all fall under the same category.
That was my other question, if that included those, okay.
Anything else? This was a pretty easy evening. We do have a motion and a second to approve the Otis Elevator Company Service Contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed or abstain. Thank you so much.
So Clayton, are you enjoying the job?
I am.
Good, you're doing a good job.
Um moving on to the next part of our agenda, we have second call for citizens' comments. We have two this evening. If you are wanting to speak, please make sure you do sign up with Mrs. Donna Wilson in the back um before you do so. But I have Susan Martis wanting to speak on facilities this evening. Just a reminder, we have three minutes. And we will have the timer up on the on the screens for you. Thank you for coming this evening.
I just had to compliment these two outstanding teachers. I was the principal. Four years at Woodrow Wilson, they are superstars. And I have to say about Mrs. Perez, when I went to Wilson, she was my secretary. And I knew she wants to be the art teacher. And I thought the kids deserve her more than me. And so thank you, both of you outstanding teachers.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Now can we start the three?
Good evening, Dr. Himsel and school board. And school board. Um my name is Susan Martis. I am a product of the Vigo County School Corporation. I've lived on the same street my whole life in Terre Haute. Uh went to Indiana State University and worked for the school corporation. And this gives me goosebumps because I miss it every day, but you're doing a great job, so. My age timed out, so I had to I had to retire. But anyway. I'm going to read to you what I had put on social media because it it tells exactly how I feel. And um so I will start. I had never officially met Dr. Himsel until the semi-state game. He said hello and said, Martis, am I right? I replied yes and gave him my first name. He immediately stated, believe me, I really am trying. I assured him that I had no problems with the tough job that he was given. Then we talked basketball. As I left, he invited me to come to meet with him and talk. His last statement was, we may not agree on everything, but I am willing to listen. Fair enough, I replied. We met a month later. Dr. Himsel and I spoke about many things taking place in education presently, from the national level to our local level. We spoke about the decline in enrollment, the age of our schools, curriculum data, teacher pay. Leadership at the state level that we have had over the past forty-five years, our favorite professors, Dr. Todd Whitaker and his wife Beth. And how they were positives in our careers. He spoke highly of Terre Haute and how blessed we were to have great universities right here among us. That are leaning in to work with our corporation. He praised our school board for being diligent about researching every angle of their decision-making and I appreciate that also. Our views on curriculum are the same, especially reading. He made me go first to say what was most important to me. I said curriculum and then he agreed. I was glad um that he agreed that it was curriculum. But our views, he made, pardon me, he went on to tell me that our data was showing improvement overall, which excited me. Two teachers from an inner city school at church a couple su- Sundays ago confirmed to me how their data had greatly improved. Their excitement over their students' improvement made me want to jump back into my profession and those two excellent teachers. Have been at the same school for their whole career and are part of what some have called the lost generation. Which I pray will be found this school year and their pay increase. I left Dr. Himsel's office feeling positive and offering to do anything I could do to help teachers, principals. And administrative staff in any way needed that would help our students succeed. Now on facilities. I have spoken with several current principals, retired principals. Attended the facilities meetings and have listened to the people in the group I was in. In my group were two retired teachers. One was a farmer, one was a current businessman, one was a retired teacher. But is back in teaching and is an extraordinary educator who is still producing student champions in his subject area. And tutoring students who need to raise their understanding.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we we have to stop. I'm so sorry. Well, could you sum it up and like?
I'm for the facilities. And most of the community is for the facilities. We've never had a plan. Thank you for the plan.
We were following very well. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um is that post still on social media? So we can go find it, yeah, send read the end. Okay, thank you. Um next I have James Twitchell on facilities. Welcome. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you uh to the board and the corporation officials. Uh my name's James Twitchell. I'm a two thousand five graduate of Terre Haute South. Uh and Honey Creek Middle School in Dixie B prior to that. I'm a lifelong resident of Terre Haute. I have two kids. That are one and three years old and while they'll not be immediately impacted by the facility changes in the short term, they most definitely will in the long term. I'd like to also note that my wife's a teacher of at one of the elementary schools proposed uh to be repurposed. I share these details about my family just to highlight that we too will be directly impacted by the proposed changes. I'm here tonight as I was in twenty twenty-two in support of the Vigo County School Corporation, the city of Terre Haute and Vigo County. I think some of the concerns that our community has laid out are valid and well thought out, but failure to move this plan forward is far greater than to do nothing at all. I'd like to address a few of the concerns. Uh the threat of moving your kids out of the corporation because of larger class sizes. To be clear, students leaving Vigo County School Corporation is a current problem. The threat of additional students leaving is not exclusive to the proposed plan. I think the long-term gain far outweighs any additional lost students in the immediate future because of this plan. Large max capacity class sizes is also a current problem. Consolidation of schools should in theory create smaller class sizes. With the addition of grade level cl- classrooms, creating a scenario where our best classroom teachers and administrators are those promoted into newly created positions. Let's talk about athletics. As a former division one college athlete and a member of the Wabash Valley Athletic Association, I can say that the idea of less athletic. Opportunities is misguided. When I entered high school in two thousand one, we had freshman A and B basketball teams at Terre Haute South. This past season, they barely had enough for one freshman boys' basketball team, no freshman girls' basketball team. As another example of our failing athletic structure currently, we do not offer middle school football. Our ability to offer middle school football is greatly increased by the larger school sizes and athletic facility enhancements. And lastly, in closing, let's talk about closings. The Vigo County School Corporation has shown they can successfully repurpose, reinvent closed facilities. They recently have done this with the closing of Demming Elementary uh repurposed into Demming Early Learning Center. And maybe more controversial at the time, but more notable Meadows Elementary School uh repurposed into the Boys and Girls Club. Neat junior achievement of the Wabash Valley, of which I serve as a board member and classroom volunteer in several Vigo County School Corporation schools. For those in our community uh unaware of programming taking place in Meadows, the corporation should be celebrated for the opportunities they've created. Within these uh closed facilities. I trust that they will be able to replicate the successful repurposing of proposed future closings. It's time we as a community put our own self-interest and differences aside to support our educators, our youth, our community. And our school corporation as we move this well-thought-out and common sense plan forward. Thank you all very much for your work.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Thank you, James.
Um at this time, we have information from our superintendent and board members.
Yeah, I wanna begin by just clarifying something that we had talked about a few meetings ago. Um and I'm sure that Sue's gonna ask me about it, so I'm just gonna go ahead and say it now. We got our ESSR money when we had to, we submitted our appeal.
That's a big deal.
And then we had to re-submit it again and it got closed. We received it and so over the time when Donna was on vacation. The money arrived and we got notice that we will get the rest of the money as those as that project is closed out. Um I also wanna congratulate all of our four Hers. I was able to stop by the four H fair and there were some just amazing projects and work that they had done. Very proud of the work that they've done. We also wanna congratulate those who were involved in successfully making sure that university connections. The Performing Arts Workshop and our first year of Tech Quest went really well. We had very positive feedback from all the kids involved in each of those. And believe it or not, Jump Start sessions are less than a month away. And so we continue to get ready for the first part of uh the first start of school. Um for those of you who are still enjoying your summer. Uh there's been many things in the news um throughout June and the first part of July. And all I can say is I hope that our kids and our families continue to be safe and make good choices. We can't wait to see all of them return. And we hope that some of the tragedies that have been in the news here recently ends so that we can celebrate their return here in a few weeks. Again, enjoy a safe remainder of the summer.
Any board members?
Why y'all look at me when you said? Thank you to Tribune Star, the editorial you guys did there was great, Sue, so thank you for the you and your team. I thought that was right on spot, so thank you. And I wanna just say one thing too. I'm excited where we're at here, folks. We got a plan and it's moving forward. And I'm just excited though. Thanks for the comments and like, I've got a lot of comments from people out there. Some are. Challenged, but that's okay. This is a work in progress, some of this. We'll listen to all these comments as a board and I'm proud to be up here with this group. Uh the last thing I have is, I think the when we all spoke that one night, JD, what was your comment? Something about fear.
Don't don't be fearful of what we have now, be fearful of what happens if we do nothing.
That's good. And then the other one came to mind. What was yours?
What if it all works out?
There's what I'd like to end with. Thank you both.
I'll just I'll just share. Um I think one thing we just need to be very mindful of the motions from this plan. From those that are being affected and um be safe spaces to allow people to feel those emotions because they are real. Um I've had some conversations about that and I hope after those emotions settle that. Those that want to reach out to board members or Dr. Himsel or anyone in the corporation to have, if you have questions or comments or you. Want us to come and speak at an event or or just, you know, meet you for coffee and have a discussion, we are all willing to do that. I actually had a doctor's appointment this morning. My doctor walks in and she's like, hey, I like it. I like what you guys are doing. It was just an. Kind of awkward, but then again reassuring that even they are seeing what we are doing. Our community is paying attention and. And they know who we are and are willing to share, so please continue to do that. Um but again, if you have questions, please come to our website. There's all, everything the board has seen and has been presented with is on our website. We have FAQs there. Please direct individuals to visit the website. Um we have nothing to hide in this process and we want to bring you along with us, so thank you. Um anyone else? At this time, our future meeting is Monday, July twenty-eighth at uh six PM here in the conference center. And have a safe summer. Thank you all for being here and we hope to see you on the twenty-eighth. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?